That's the difference between that district and some other.
Good evening, everybody. It is Monday, January ninth, seven thirty PM here at Guilford High School Library, Media Center. This is the General Board of Ed meeting, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. And with our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great. Well, welcome, everybody who's here. And we'll get right down to business with the agenda. Item number three is action on the minutes of December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, which is our regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? So moved. One second. Does anybody have any comments on the December twelfth minutes?
One correction. It's item one on the first page. It's Noel Petro.
There we are. Thank you. Any other notes or corrections? Okay, so all in favor of approving the minutes from December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, say aye.
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 Upstand.
Thanks, John. Okay, so item number four is a public forum for topics on the board agenda only. And if someone has something they'd like to speak about regarding the agenda, they can come up to the podium and use their time. Anybody interested in doing so? No? Okay. All right, then we'll move on. Item number five is to review and approve of the expenditures for the month of December twenty twenty-two. And the reviewer of the month is Board of Ed member Arnold Scretta.
All right. So to begin with, we just had our Operations Committee meeting where we discussed the entire warrant, which is, for the public's knowledge, the warrant is actually the list of expenses that we review and approve. So we reviewed that and discussed it at length. Expenditures for the month of December twenty twenty-two were five million, two hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred seventy-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Expenditures and encumbrances through the end of December were forty-six percent of the budget, as compared to forty-seven point six seven percent of the budget in the twenty-one to twenty-two year. There are two million, three hundred ninety thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents in total payments out of that. Revenue for the month of December twenty twenty-two was one thousand, seven hundred eighty-three dollars for Medicaid. It should be noted that salaries are lower December of twenty-two as opposed to twenty twenty-one. The reason for that is because it's only two payrolls as opposed to three, like there were in twenty twenty-one. Employee benefits were also lower due to reduced unemployment claims, as well as a new workers' comp provider who has better rates. Tuition basically approximates the prior year. And some of the notable expenditures that we have, there were virtual headsets for cinematography class at the high school. There were hockey and golf supplies purchased. There's items for the shop class at Guilford High School, including a bandsaw and a Jaws press tool. There's assorted security improvements, including cameras in common areas, and furniture for Baldwin, a Lakes playground tube, and payments for adult ed, which were required by law. So I think that sums it up.
Does anyone else have any questions about the expenditures for the month of December? Okay, great. Thank you, Arnold. So moving on to item number six, communications. Has anyone on the board or here at the table, sorry? Oh, sorry. You're right. So please approve, a motion to approve the expenditures for the month of December twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you. So now, moving on to item number six, communications. Does anybody have any communications they'd like to share?
I will share from, from our operations meeting, there was some, some comments made about the security improvements that we're making at Baldwin. A lot of the families had questioned what was going on during pickup last week. These were all due to our amazing new system that we're installing at Baldwin that hope to install at the other schools. We were doing this testing of the system just after pickup. There were some, still some parents that were still picking up. So just, just letting everybody know there was nothing going on, just testing out the new system.
Thank you. Okay, so unless there's any other communications, we'll move on to item number seven, which is student representatives. You guys take it away.
Good evening. So as for Adams, they have their eighth grade band and orchestra concert, as well as their seventh and eighth grade select chorus concert. Before the break, both concerts were well attended. They were excellent, and the Adams community is very proud of their musicians. Their seventh grade band concert is coming up on January nineteenth, and the band and orchestra select group concerts on January twenty-fourth. As for winter sports, they are well underway, where girls and boys basketball teams are having great seasons, and the wrestling team hosted a tough match at Adams on Friday against HK Middle School and tied twenty-one to twenty-one. The seventh graders are finishing up an interdisciplinary language arts and social studies unit, and eighth graders are also, will also do this unit in the, in the coming months. These are great opportunities for students to demonstrate reading and writing skills across different disciplines. At A W Cox, they are discovering, discussing sparks, where, as like things in their lives that bring them joy and happiness, they will be having a school-wide assembly to celebrate their sparks together at the end of the month. As for Guilford High School, the winter sports are doing great, where the boys hockey, I believe, is undefeated. They, we just recently had our winter pep rally right before we went home for break, or we got out of school for break, where we had, we had a student-faculty basketball game. All of our winter sports teams got to, oh, no, sorry, fall. Yes, winter sports teams got to walk out. As well as the cultural competence committee, there are no place for hate visual was unveiled, and that consisted of four parts, which ended up together being a globe with people around it and the names of the students who, and teachers who had signed the pledge. That is it for my schools.
Okay, and then for Melissa Jones, the book fair took place. So kids came and shopped during the school day and then brought their parents at night for a hot cocoa, hot cocoa social. Before break, Melissa, the voice days came and visited all the elementary schools, and I think Baldwin, too. And then recently, students have been working in the Maker Space Room, and they just completed a twenty Kiva plank challenge, which I looked it up, and I have no idea what it is. But I think it's some sort of like constructiony sort of thing. And then at Guilford Lakes, the third graders had someone come in, someone to come in, talk about force and motion, using the planets and suns as examples. As part of a music and, music and movement enrichment activity, pre-K through second graders use various instruments and different musical props to play, sing, and dance different children's rhymes and songs. Students are currently creating Blizzard boxes to be filled with storm survival supplies for homebound seniors in our community. And then today was Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. So the students made cards, banners, and a platter of goodies to give five Guilford officers who came and visited. And I just wanted to add one last heartwarming story that happened at Guilford Lakes, which was in the news. There was a boy whose father had been deployed in Somalia for multiple months, and he wasn't expected to return back to, back to Guilford for the holidays. And then he got, he made a surprise visit at the school for a student who had only been at Guilford Lakes for three weeks. So he got to give his dad a tour of the school and then got a little head start on winter break.
To start off with Baldwin, they've initiated a new club at BMS, the Community Builders Club. Students in this club will work with their advisors to plan and implement community days at BMS. These days focus on Choose Love, the social-emotional learning initiative that's been part of BMS since twenty seventeen. The second school assembly, which will focus on gratitude, will take place in mid-January. And many thanks go out to Jen Orgavam, Nanny Mitchell, Nancy Mitchell, and Dana Cutler for taking the lead on this important work. And in addition to that, all three of the performance music groups at Baldwin will have both in-school and evening concerts in early February. They'll start with the orchestra concert on February first, the chorus program on February eighth, and finishing off with the band program on February fifteenth. They're excited to return to both in-school and evening performances for all these groups, and those groups will provide meaningful experiences to the students. Moving on to Calvin Lee, students in second grade at Lee have been learning lots about fossils. During a trip from a, during a visit from an anthropology professor, they had an opportunity to interact with real fossils and even touch a fossilized triceratops horn. Last month, students learned about the holiday music traditions of various cultures from the music teacher, Mr. Abraham. This culminated in the entire school gathering in the auditorium to sing these songs as one. Before each performance, the song is introduced and its cultural origins were explained. Some of the holidays featured for Christmas, Kwanzaa, and Oshugatsu. Additionally, all students sang Choose Love, the Calvin Lee school song. In physical education, students learned proper jumping mechanics in their ninja training session. The students built muscle and increased flexibility through practicing these motions. And I'll add on, at GHS recently, the rec basketball league has started up. There are twelve teams participating, about eight students per team, I'd say. Yeah, people are having a blast there. It's fun. And in addition to that, with midterms coming up, students are working hard in their classes and getting ready for those.
I did also need to add that for mastery-based diploma, we are, for seniors, we're having our gala night on Thursday. I will be there presenting my project, but we put twenty-five hours into our projects. And I know that a lot of students are working very hard and very creative projects as well. One girl that I know is doing a fashion show with thrifted clothes. And other people are notifying people of important resources that we have here at Guilford High.
At six to eight.
At six to eight, yeah.
And it's here at the high school?
It's here at the high school from six to eight, and we have our special meeting at seven, but at least we could come for a little while.
And is it through the whole school or is it in a particular location?
Yeah, so it's going to be, I believe presentations will be in the library, some at the roundtable as well. And then there's going to be like science, kind of like science fair-type presentations, where students will be at like desks, and people will get to walk around.
Cool. Well, thank you, all of you. I know midterms are coming up, so please don't feel obligated to stay. We really love your reports every month and your perspective on things. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to item number eight, Superintendent's Report. Dr. Freeman is not able to be here tonight, but item, the one main item on the agenda under superintendents is a Guilford Youth Mentoring presentation, so I'd love to invite the folks from Guilford Youth Mentoring to kind of come up and share their input with us.
As they're coming up, I just want to say that, you know, Mr. Mccentee, for years, he used to talk about in his graduation speeches about the importance of the three pillars of Guilford. And I'm reminded about, you know, he, he talked about exemplary students that we have and exemplary teachers and support staff and administrators. But he also talked a lot about the community and the support that we all get from the members of this community. And there's no greater example of that community support for our students than the mentoring program. I've been a teacher and administrator for thirty-six years in the state of Connecticut, and I've been in multiple districts, and I've never seen, I was telling Lisa, I've never seen such a strong mentoring program in, in a school system. And I just think we're, we're very lucky to have you, you guys here and the support we receive from you. The rate of return on that investment from you and your mentors is just incalculable. So thank you.
Thank you. It's a great lead-in. I appreciate that, Jason. I'm Alisa Milano, and Lisa Ott joins me. I'm the president of the Advisory Board for Guilford Youth Mentoring, and I've been involved with mentoring since two thousand and six as a mentor in a bunch of different schools. And then I joined the board a handful of years ago, and I'm, I've been the de facto president for a bit. But I wanted, we wanted to come tonight just to reintroduce Guilford Youth Mentoring. I know we have some new people on the Board of Ed. We have some parents here, but also members of the community. And I, I, I think it's really important to highlight this unique program that we have within our schools and show some gratitude for the support that we get from the Board of Ed for that program. So basically, the structure of it is we have three employees that are based out of the high school here, Lisa Ott, Simona Nerny, and Lisa McDougald. And they coordinate the program over the, all seven schools. So they work for the program in the school system with staff at every school, between administrators, social workers, school counselors. We have our advisory board. We are a five oh one C three and a member agency of the Guilford Community Fund. So our advisory board manages additional financial support from private donors and local organizations. And we're supported by mentor volunteers from different groups as well as local residents. We have people that have been mentoring for twenty years. We have a couple of local businesses in town that really put forth a strong encouragement to get involved in the community here. And they're, they allow them an hour a week to come to one of our schools, being matched with a student, and spend time and going back to work. And we think that's, you know, a real strong testament to their commitment to their employees' well-being in their business, as well as giving back to our community, and we're so thankful for that. We follow best practices of our national organization, and we stay current on latest research in mentoring. Our mentors are screened and trained. They're monitored and supported through that framework. Just a couple of responsibilities of the board, and then I want to pass it over to Lisa, because she's in the trenches with it. We're, really, our main responsibility is for fundraising and our fiduciary responsibilities of those funds. We provide funding for everything but salaries and office space. So we have legal status, which allows us to collect donations. We provide scholarships to graduates if they, similar to what we do within GHS to graduating seniors. We ask that they write a short, simple essay and just talk about the reflection on what mentoring meant to them throughout their tenure. And Lisa will highlight some of the things that have come back to us, but it's really special. We really want to encourage continuing in education, whether it be in trade and vocation, a community college, a four-year college. So we have been working towards helping them with a financial gift. We support events and celebrations. We do recruiting events, training sessions. We pay for materials and supplies for the kids, whether it be an ice cream party at the end of the year. We have snacks in the office here for kids that, you know, are hungry throughout the day, and they can come in, and they're warmly welcomed by our staff. And so any way that the advisory board can support our staff in those ways is, you know, what we do. So, but I'd really love to have Lisa dig into what the program's about.
Great. In two thousand, we started with twelve original volunteers from Guilford Savings Bank. And just prior to COVID, we had reached a hundred and sixty-five volunteers in all seven schools. And some of the mentors have more than one kid, which is wonderful. COVID did really drop our numbers a lot, challenged us to really get creative, to think about different ways that we can support not only the kids, but also our community of mentors, who, a lot of them were feeling very isolated. So it was really interesting thinking about different ways to build community. And so let's see, just to give you an idea of how things have been, the, at our lowest, we dropped to about sixty-five pairs. I've never seen a year like this year, where we've had so many people volunteering all at once, and also so many requests for mentors. And so we're back up to, I think it's about seventy-six or seventy-eight pairs at the moment. And we've got people rolling in slowly and steadily. We're certainly looking for mentors with all sorts of diverse backgrounds, because the kids have really interesting backgrounds, interests, and all that kind of thing. If I had one sort of typical kind of a kid that comes to us, tends to be boys who are getting raised with great women in their lives, and they could just use some guy time. The research shows that mentoring works the best in that middle group of kids that just could use a little extra attention to help them along the way. When the mentors show up in the schools, they demonstrated their kids, but also to all the kids who see them. And at the elementary schools, they're absolutely rock stars. And, you know, the kids would be like, your mentor's here. But what they demonstrate is that there are people who take time out of their day, their busy schedules, to come in and spend time with kids, that kids matter and that they're important. And that really is what the core of mentoring is all about. The research shows it's not about having a big agenda. And I think the most common question I get is, am I doing anything? I started off as a mentor myself, and that certainly was the way that I felt. We get mentors to play Hungry Hungry Hip-Hop for eleven weeks in a row, and they really are wondering if they're doing anything, but they're showing that kid that they're important. And we, as Lisa mentioned, we ask our, our students to write a little bit about what the mentoring program has meant to them over the years. And they say things like, my mentor's given me the strength to achieve what I thought was out of reach. My mentor is much more than an adult I can talk to. She's a great friend that I learned amazing things from and who helped me when growing up got hard. According to our national organization, which is called Mentor, kids with mentors are fifty-five more like, fifty-five percent more likely to enroll in college, seventy-eight percent more likely to volunteer regularly, ninety percent more interested in becoming mentors themselves, and a hundred and thirty percent more likely to hold leadership positions. So it just, it's amazing to see kids who, when they first start off at the high school, because that's the kids that I typically see. You know, they barely talk to you. It's a big, big deal when they take their hood off and look you in the eye. And then, you know, a couple of years later, they're telling you all about their plans, and they're just, you know, are bubbling over. It's, it's really wonderful to see. One of the elementary school social workers really explains the program in a way that I just love. She said, "This program not only helps kids who have been through major turmoil, it benefits the child who just hasn't connected to school yet, who sees school as a tremendous burden or as a place that they often don't fit in." And we certainly have seen that with COVID. It benefits the child who's a little quirky, who needs a safe place to practice new skills. Children who have been difficult behaviorally settle into better patterns. Kids who aren't motivated to take risks with their learnings start to give more effort and find success. Everyone does better when they know unconditionally that they matter, and this is what the program does. It brings the invisible child into view. Mentoring supports Portrait of a Graduate. I actually was really excited to be a part of that process. And we really, really appreciate the board's commitment to really thinking about kids holistically and supporting, supporting our efforts. It's, it's made a huge difference, and we see it every day. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. Yeah, are there any questions the board would like to offer?
First, thank you. But for the viewing public, what's it look like to become a mentor in terms of commitment? And how can the people get involved?
Great. We absolutely encourage people to visit our website, which is Guilfordmentoring.org. My assistant, Lisa McDougald, has put together a wonderful website. And as far as commitment, it's somewhere about half an hour to an hour a week. You will go through an application, a screening, and training process to get the ball rolling. And, you know, certainly, if you're on the fence about it, we're not going to twist your arm, we promise. But we really spend a lot of time trying to make a match that's as natural as possible, so that it's a genuine relationship. We never just take the kid at the top of the list and the adult at the top of the list. And so there may be a kid who's really interested in civil war history. And so some of the time, we'll recruit for someone with a particular background like that. And then other times, it might just be that they're, they've just moved to town. And so we've had mentors who talk about what it was like to move to town when they were, go to a new school, when they were in middle school. And so we'll kind of put those experiences together and things like that. And other times, it's just, you know, two people who enjoy, you know, having fun going outdoors and don't mind if it's cold weather and that kind of stuff. But we really, we spend a lot of time on that and then work on getting to know the mentors, really try and create as much community as we possibly can as we're going through the process, both for the mentors and the mentees, so that everybody really feels a good sense of belonging. And mentors very often will stay with their students from elementary school all the way up through graduation. But certainly, we have really important relationships that are for much shorter periods of time. The kid might be going through something difficult, like we had a dad who was working in Europe. And when he came back, his, his kid was ready to go hang out with his friends. And so our mentors really love seeing when the kids develop that joy in being with their friends and things like that, feel more comfortable and connected. And, and so we also teach our mentors to be comfortable with moving on as well.
How do kids, how do kids get on a mentee list?
All sorts of different ways. Some of the time, parents will check in with us and let us know. Other times, most often, a social worker or guidance counselor, or in some cases, the teachers will let us know that there's a kid who could use a little extra attention. We do always circle back with the social workers and the people in the schools, because they've got that real big picture of what's going on with, with the kids, so that we can prioritize, because, you know, we would love to provide a mentor for every kid, but we don't have that many resources quite yet.
And at the younger ages, sometimes a friend will have a mentor, and they'll, they'll say, I, I want that. That, you know, that seems really great. You have somebody that comes. And so we see that more at the younger ages, which is wonderful. Maybe the parent didn't realize that the student was looking for something or the teacher, but they're, those are the hidden gems.
Yeah, we always listen to that.
Any other questions?
No, thank you so much. Like, as Jason said, it's such an integral part of our community, all the work you guys do. And we thank you. We thank you for seeing it through COVID, and I'm glad to hear it's, it's coming back to life, and you're getting a lot of participation, and hopefully, you know, the community and all of us will obviously continue to support you guys. So thank you for the incredible work you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thanks for your time.
It's not on the agenda, but I did want to recognize that Jody Goller, our sitting Assistant Superintendent in charge of curriculum, will be leaving us soon. So I just wanted to obviously say thank you on behalf of the board for the incredible support you've given to all of us in the district, but also to give you a few minutes just to kind of share with us kind of your experience and some final words. Although it was so sad to see you go.
Well, thank, thank you. And it's been a real privilege to, to work with you and the extraordinary staff. Everybody's been very open and friendly and, and very supportive. It's, I, I will say this has been just a great way to end my central office career. I heard Jason mention thirty-six years. That's, he's a young buck here. It's been forty-four years for me. And, and my brother and his family have lived in this community for many years, and he's always talked so positively about it. For me to work in this community and, and serve with coaches and specialists and staff and leadership, it's been a real privilege. And I just believe in my heart of hearts that you're, you're doing exceptional, exceptional work. And it's, and mentioned a few times around the whole child. It's what I've really spent my career centered on, and to work in a district that cares so much about the whole child, it's just been a real privilege. So thank you for your support and your, and your fellowship. And if I could be any support to you in my perch at Cape, just down the road in Weathersfield.
Oh, that's great.
I will be happy to provide any support I can from a policy or any perspective. I will be happy to provide any support I can from a policy or any perspective.
Great.
You have ear and eyes.
Thank you. Really, thank you so much. Thank you, Jody. Okay, so moving on to item number nine, the board agenda. Our first item is 9.1. We're going to act on personnel item, which is, let me get to that page. So we have two, we have, the first one is to ratify the resignation of the following teacher. Jen Amili was a first-grade teacher for less than one year at Cox Elementary School, effective date 12/23/22. Do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you. The second is to ratify the appointment of the following teacher, Justin Heilmann for Adams Middle School, one full-time, one-year position for technology education teacher. Zero-to-one-year experience, effective date is, well, was 1/3/23. Do I have a motion to approve, Justin Heilmann?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, so moving on, we're receiving for possible action the approval of participation in the Town Wellness Program. This is a Slim Nation program. And I'll let Linda Trudeau, our business manager, just explain a little bit about that. We've been doing it for a year, and now we're talking about revisiting it again.
Right, thank you. Back in April of last year, the board approved for up to 20 Board of Ed employees to participate in this program, which was funded by our medical trust account. The town also did the same. They had 20 employees, and it went very well. It was a huge success, and we're looking to run the program again. Same parameters, there'll be 20 employees from both the town and 20 from the Board of Ed. The company is keeping their cost the same at $550 a person, so it'll cost the total between the town and the Board of Ed $22,000. And I'm requesting that you approve our participation and that we bring forward a recommendation to the Board of Finance that the funding for this be out of the medical trust account.
Okay.
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay, item 9.3, these are recommendations from the Policy Committee. So Mrs. Peck, do you want to go through these?
Sure.
And then we can vote?
Yes. So these were receive items last month, so I think now we've all had some time to take a look at these new policies. The first one is Policy and Regulation Number 5002, which is the prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment. This specifically defines guidance for sexual harassment against students. The second one, do you want to take them individually or do you want to just go through?
Yeah, why don't we vote on them individually? And then we can, so what, we are now voting on the new policy and regulation 5002, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the second one is very similar. These, by the way, are all kind of getting us current with state regulations. We don't really have much choice. This is really just mandatory policy updates that we need to do to keep up with state regs. The next one is 4178, and this one pertains to sexual harassment in the workplace, so not students but employees. So this one is defining reporting and anything that would fall under kind of Title IX for sex discrimination in the workplace.
Okay. So again, we are voting on the new policy and regulation 4178, prohibition of sex discrimination and sexual harassment in the workplace. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next policy and reg is 4112. This is anything that is kind of non-sexual in nature, so this defines guidance and reporting for nondiscrimination and harassment for students.
Okay, so then we are voting to approve Policy and Regulation 4112, nondiscrimination and harassment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then lastly, Policy and Regulation 5004, which is non-Titel IX, so non-sexual harassment in the workplace. So this pertains to gender identity, anything that is kind of non-sexual in nature, and again, it's just to keep, keep up with state statutes. So this one is nondiscrimination and harassment in the workplace.
Okay, so we are voting to approve Policy and Regulation 5004, which is nondiscrimination and harassment as it pertains. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Kristen.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Kristen.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to item number 10, reports of committees. So Kristen, for Policy Committee, do we have any upcoming meetings or nothing?
We have nothing for a little bit.
Okay, great. Operations Committee.
Yes, lots discussed this evening at the Operations Committee. I think the, the highlights were, let's see, a very long facilities report as always, but I think what needs, we need to call attention to was an emergency plumbing issue that happened over winter break in which the majority of our facilities team were on-site at, at Melissa Jones. So thank you to everyone who had their winter break interrupted. Very thankful for that, but happy to report that everything has been cleaned up, and we are ready to start school on schedule. And we got a very good report of the 595 building here on the campus, and just kind of the ongoing progress in how that whole, how that whole building is going to work once it's completed. And then I'll add that lottery is still open for pre-K placements. That ends on, on January 27th, and that's everything from my list.
Great, thank you. Okay, so moving on to Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. Dr. Hirsch?
We're meeting it later in the month.
Great. Okay. Any reports, any liaisons to town committees?
I have no update.
Nothing? Okay, all right. And finally, liaison to Board of Direct, Learn Board of Directors. We are still working through that as a board. We're going to try to each take a month where we can participate. This is such a great resource. I know Mrs. Peck had been doing that for us, but we're going to work on that this year and try to get everybody at least out there once every month so that we can see a breadth of all the wonderful resources that they offer. Okay, so we can now move on to item number 11 with this Public Questions. Comments or questions are limited to four minutes. If anyone would like to come up and address the board, just share your name and address, that'd be great, just come up to the podium. Does anybody want to do that? No? Okay. Making it a brisk meeting tonight.
Madam Chair, if I may interrupt?
Yes, please.
Before we adjourn, I just want to point out for the public that we have a couple of important meetings.
Yeah, I was just going to run through, yeah, sorry, sorry. So before we adjourn, I was going to just jump to that. So we have some pretty important meetings coming up. Thank you, Jason. This Thursday, we have our special meeting for budget presentation. Because Dr. Freeman could not be here tonight, we would typically do it this evening, we've posted for a special meeting. It'll be this Thursday, 7:00 PM, and it'll be at Baldwin in the library there. So hopefully, folks can attend because that'll be the first public presentation of this year's proposed budget. And then on Monday, January 23rd, and Tuesday, January 24th, we are having workshop budget meetings for public input, and those will be held here in the library at 7:30, and that's a great opportunity for the public to come out and share any input they'd like to offer the board in terms of our budget. And then we will have our special meeting to vote on the budget on February 6th, and then our next regular meeting is February 13th. So we've got a lot going on this month around the budget, so hopefully, the public will participate. The budget is published to the town website as of when, I'm not sure.
I'll probably have it up on Thursday. Normally, I don't do it until after it is presented to the board, but we'll probably put it up during the day on Thursday.
Perfect, so then the public can access that online and review it and take your time with it, and then, you know, please offer input and then come to those input meetings. It's so critical that we hear from all of you. Okay, great.
Do we also have a meeting on the 17th?
Board of Finance?
Board of Finance, yeah, that's a joint Board of Ed, Board of Finance budget meeting. But we'll review our proposed budget with them as well, and that is a public meeting, so anyone can come to that as well. Okay, is there anything else before we adjourn?
No.
Okay, great. So if there's nothing else, then I will get a motion to approve a German of the meeting.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight, and have a really great week.